Moving on then with the presentation, Dr. Maleko.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate the principles. And again, these are three of our great principles representing our great ADSA staff. So, thank you. I'm going to take on the rest of the presentation. I have execs ready if needed, but I do want to mention, and we, you know, we have, I have discussed this with board trustees, and it's been in board briefs, that, you know, the two group at the secondary means that it will be a three to six foot social distancing, not the six. Now, it is allowed under the Health Department requirements and the governor because we have the approved mitigation plan. So, we mentioned that earlier, and I have some slides on that. But the two groups at the secondary, the two groups at the secondary, the advantage is not only getting in students in more, and and I've told you before that students do want to get into school. But secondly, it would allow a better ability to pair that with the elementary level. And I'm not going to say it's going to be perfect, but that would allow us then to have families in on the same days. If you go to three groups, then you would not have that ability. So, I'm going to kind of move back along with this presentation. And so, we, we will have seating charts in some different areas like the bus classroom, and you heard it talk about it in the cafeterias at the elementary with Mr. Higgins. And so, that is very important that we have that, and we have to kind of document for contact tracing. As you're aware, anyone that enters a building has to go up right now for staff, has to go on the electronic form and document that they're in when they leave, or they go in, or they have to do it at the entrance. So, that would be anybody that enters the building according to my OSHA and other guidelines from the state. Transportation, students are required to wear masks. Social distancing is not required as long as they're wearing masks, and that's just because, you know, the state understands that that may not be possible. Now, obviously, we are going to limit, Mr. Andrews has presented on this before at previous meetings. I won't bring him in right now. Obviously, we're going to not have the same kind of number of students because of the two groups on the bus, but the reality is, is that you wouldn't be able to do the six foot social distancing, but you would, you would definitely spread kids, students out, and they would be wearing the masks. The disinfecting between runs is no longer required, but as Dearborn Schools always does, we're going to still do it. We've already made that decision, and hand sanitization is available. And again, Mr. Andrews has spoken to a lot of the specifics on transportation, and I mean, I have them available if needed, but I'm just kind of going along. Building entry procedures, you guys have already kind of talked about that. The screening will happen at home. And you've got, some of the questions you've already asked around that is we would have, you know, different entrances that'll be determined at each building, and we've been really going through the buildings. There's sanitizer and other things. My understanding is that some of the ability to keep doors and things open in the buildings will be a little more flexible. We've talked to the fire marshal and whatnot, that they may not be as rigorous, so we'll have to make those decisions. The sanitizer, though, my understanding is, we're going to, in most cases, it'll have to be in the classroom, not in the hallways, and that's something they're requiring. But the every, the regulations keep changing, so we're following it, we're on top of it, but just know that we will continue to do the, the more above and beyond type thing for our students. You know, we, we've talked about this before, but I'll just mention, you know, it's required to have a quarantine room for students that may have symptoms, and, you know, staff would be trained on that, and there would be N95 masks that would be available. And I mentioned our mitigation plan, you know, that was approved by Wayne County Health Department. Our, I, I'm proud of our staff as well. I appreciate the support of the board. This has been a tough year for all of us. You've all hung in there. You know, again, we're having a very long meeting that's very important on a Saturday for our students. You know, we want in-person instruction. I would say that we're balancing that with the health and safety needs for our staff, students, and community, and I think the board's done a great job. I got to support the comments by Mr. Martin and others about our teachers knocking it out of the park, outstanding, our support staff, our food service staff that is out there every week, you know, over 90,000 meals. You know, all of our staff, you know, our transportation staff, as the board has seen, we have now a redeployment system that we've been doing where we have social workers and others that are working with our transportation and other staff that are checking in on students. They're not going in the homes, but they're knocking on doors and delivering letters to make sure that no child gets left behind or student. And so, our staff is stepping up as they always do, and we appreciate the support of the board. And that basically ends the presentation for today.
Thank you very much, Dr. Maleko. Any further questions before we move on to the next item? Trustee Barry.
Not a question, just a comment. I just want to echo Mr. Martin's comments and Dr. Maleko's. We can't say it enough. Yeah, thank you to all of our staff. Thank you for administrators, teachers. Just think, less than a year ago, we were hit with a pandemic. We had to reinvent, we would deliver instruction to our students. And just on a daily basis, we were making changes. You know, maybe bringing Chrome, sending Chromebooks to the homes, or the VLP, or everything we've done, just, I mean, just think about, less than 10 months, we've talked about it sometimes for like decades. You know, what if, what if, what if, what if we, we want to reinvent schools? What would that look like? We were forced to do this, and I think we did a tremendous job, and there was no way possible we could have done it with our amazing teachers and our amazing administrators. Yeah, the board. During break, I, you know, I went online, I was looking at our Facebook page. Some of our parents just wanted to get in here, and they wanted to hear a decision within five minutes. This is what we're planning on doing starting February 15th. That's not the way that works. This is the way things work. We look forward to these reports. They're very valuable to me, to all of us. Great information. And I know there's some, some questions earlier that once we go this route, what if? Well, guess what? Our teachers are amazing teachers, are amazing administrators, and the support staff have been there before. They know what they got to do. I mean, there's, there's, there's things that come up every day under normal circumstances. And I have no doubt, I have full confidence in our, in our team at Deering Public Schools. Just wanted to put that out to President Thorpe.
Trustee Petlicoff.
I have to apologize because I had to leave the room for a minute when trustee Moses and then trustee Barry were speaking about our current mitigation parameters, and trustee Moses said it was an or, we either reach D or we have the 5%.
We corrected it, that it is an and.
And I thought it was an and. I just wanted to make sure because I missed that answer. Okay, thank you.
So, what I would, I think I'm going to look for a little direction. I'm going to talk to Dr. Maleko and everyone else about this one. Since we are meeting to talk about things right now, I'll first remind everyone that no action is required at this time. You've always got 30 days that the board action is good for, and we just approved on January 11th, the continuity of learning plan that we had been doing before. So, nothing is required now. Our next meeting is scheduled to be February 8th. However, what is being presented to us now is a slight variation of what had been presented to us before. So, when I'm looking at, at this, I think what we could do is make the recommended action to, I'm going to say tweak the way we bring students back in. I'm not saying that this is going to start right now. Dr. Maleko, does that sound about right?
Sure.
Because previously, what we've been saying was K2, then 3, 5, and then the older kids. What we're saying now is that we would do the learning labs for two weeks. Then we would bring in K2, 6, 9. And then, was it two weeks later again, that we would be bringing?
Maybe a week later, yeah.
A week later, we'd bring in 3, 5, 7, and 10. And then a week later, we'd bring in, I'm sorry, that would also be pre-k. And then a week later, we would be bringing in grades 8, 11, and 12. So, that is a change from what we've been talking about before. So, we've got a recommended action item that we can move forward. Dr. Maleko, are we able to, to share that?
Yeah. Yeah, I can share that with the, the board. This was just a draft that Jim and President Thorpe and I talked about yesterday, and it's just a draft, so it can be tweaked. But there's some language that, and I'm going to share it right now. Do you want me to share the screen actually?
I'll read through it, just so it's one of his chances.
It goes over the history of the approvals, too. So, it's got that documented, and then the, the recommended action is kind of at the bottom. But again, that can be tweaked. It's nothing set because when I talk to you, we didn't have any established. It's some tweaking maybe on the, the metrics a little bit with the, the, the one week rather than two, but again, we can stick with the current, so. I just shared it with the board. And I could share the screen if you like.
Yes, if you could share the screen, please.
Okay, sure. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, so I have the history at the top. Basically, it goes over all the approvals, including the 26. So, this is similar language that was approved in previous meetings, no changes. There's some tweaking under recommend action here. And again, it's not, it's just a starter to see if the board would like to, to implement it, but it pretty much sticks almost closely with what we have already approved by just recognizing that we're also looking at other metrics just under consideration.
So, let me read through this one. Move that the board approved the plan from October 26th, and every board meeting thereafter with the modifications in the timeline that were presented at this board study session. In addition, it is recommended to accept the following modifications. First, if the positivity rate continues to trend down, give administration the flexibility to implement in-person learning labs. Second, implement similar COVID-19 metrics that were approved on October 26th in order to allow for in-person instruction. This includes that when the Wayne County Health metric grade is D or better, and the positivity rate is at 5%, is at the 5% level. However, since the trend data is moving in the right direction, and we are now officially at level D under the matrix, which was the first time since October, it's recommended that we no longer need to have a positivity rate at 5% for two weeks in a row. As soon as it hits or approaches the 5% level, administration can implement the plan that was presented to the board at this meeting. Third, consideration should be given to ICU rates, hospitalization rates, and the number of employees who receive the vaccine. It is recommended that this data is also considered with the return to in-person instruction along with potential for closures for the duration of the 2021 school year. I'm not making or asking for a motion at this time, but I would say that we should move forward with a motion and a support so we can have a discussion on this one the way it's written, or if we would want to tweak any part of this one. But I do think it would be important to acknowledge the, the recommended changes, at least as to when we would phase in groups.
Let me, let's be clear, are we, you said we don't have to take, take any action today. But now you're looking for to put a motion on the table, then go into discussion. Once you put a motion on the table, you have to be voted on, so.
Right. I'm saying that we don't have to have, we don't have to put this motion on the table. We're fine for two more weeks.
Sure.
At some point, we're going to have to move forward with this. What we are able to do is if we wanted to put the motion on the table and discuss this, we could discuss if we want to make any adjustments, whether it's the, the way the phase in would work, or the other change in there really is, instead of having to be at 5% for two weeks in a row, to be able to give the administration the flexibility to start it sooner.
Do you have to make a motion to discuss it? I don't think you do, or do you?
We can have a discussion.
That's what I thought.
We just had a presentation.
Right.
We just had a presentation. We can discuss what was presented to us and what we're thinking. Because like, like trustee Petlicoff said, once you put a question on the table, then you're, unless it's tabled, you're kind of forced to call the question.
Yeah, absolutely. You are correct, trustee Barry.
So then, let's have the conversation about this.
Whoever's controlling the, the presentation, I believe it's Dr. Maleko. Can you move it up a little bit? Can you turn it back on here, please?
Yeah, I wish I had had this ahead of time so I could print it out and have it in front of me.
Ditto. It's okay. So.
And we just, this just draft just came up last night.
Sure, that's fine, that's fine. A little bit higher. I'm using my phone here just to click it so I can have it in front of me, I, just in case we lose it.
One thing I would say, the rate of 5% is mentioned more than once. I think we should add 5% or less, just for appropriate language.
That's where I, right now, trustee McDonald. And to say, as soon as, is, is it hits or approaches the 5% level, for me at least, that's, that's a little bit of vague. I mean, we should just call it the way it is.
Yeah, you can't do it.
What do you want? Yeah.
And if we're going to continue, I've already expressed my opinion. When I did this in October, I didn't anticipate that Dearborn was going to be, remain the top positivity game changer for Wayne County outside of Detroit. And so, when we use the Wayne positivity aggregate, it's really misleading because we've got all these surrounding communities with one or two positivity cases on a daily basis, while Dearborn has something completely different.
That's why we included the other matrix, because the other matrix has Dearborn specific information included in it, and that's why it's an and, not an or.
Which is why I asked the question I asked before we went into this, because I got concerned. But it also, you know, the value of it has changed for me.
Dr. Maleko, unless there's objections, I'm okay with if you want to remove the the presentation, so at least we can have, we can see each other.
And I would just say, if you, I shared it with you, so if you open your tab, you can open the document, you can see it larger from your own computer if you choose to do so.
Trustee Watts, you had your hand raised.
So, what was proposed before? Sorry, my phone. Okay, so what was proposed? What was on, before it was a 5% from the Wayne County, correct, and a deer better?
Right.
The positivity rate would have to maintain 5% or below, and that was the aim out of Wayne County percentage, and then after the two weeks of decline of 5% or below, then an additional two weeks before we opened up, correct?
That was the previous approval, yes.
Okay, so now, what, what are we saying now? Or I guess what was on that document? I couldn't read them. I'm going to try to open that up.
You would still have two weeks, but here's the difference is we're saying that the learning labs would be triggered, and we, we put staff on notice. So, the learning labs would be over the two weeks. Now, obviously, we would give staff some notice and the parents as to, so it's not like, you know, we would decide tomorrow everyone's coming in. But because of the learning labs, you would still have that time transition where staff is both reporting and learning labs are happening. So, that would be the only thing, because we did not say that in the October meeting, the board said, explore the ability to expand learning labs. So, we've tweaked that to say we will start them, but we'll have staff report, and then we would trigger that in-person instruction under the hybrid model two weeks later.
Okay, so then to clarify, if in two weeks, we receive a 5% or below from out of Wayne County, and that comes out on a Tuesday. So, when would learning labs begin? What, what date?
I would say we could start at the following Monday, if we get that Tuesday, and we would give notice. And again, we can transition. The learning labs gives us flexibility. If in some cases, it doesn't make sense because of transportation, and otherwise, we can do that. The learning labs, we've been prepared for because we did implement them, and then we still were implementing them virtually. So, that, those learning labs, I'm not as concerned with the larger notice. It'd be more the in-person instruction, because now you're bringing in the full district into the hybrid, which is the learning lab, ability to bring learning labs in would then allow for that transition. You know, Micah Salee, for example, in Act 18, if needed, we're ready to go. We've, and in our notices to teachers, we have said, going back to when we, when we closed learning labs for in-person, be ready at any point in time for the fact that they could open. And we have an agreement, it's not an agreement, but it's an understanding with the union on learning labs, and we have a committee, and we've been working with them in meetings. So, I think we would still have the transition, and it would still hit the intent of what had happened back in October, understanding that now we're past the semester, so we can't use that. And so, for me, the phasing in of these grades would make much more sense right now.
Okay, and then back on that screen where it gave us the week's distribution of grades, if we were to bring them back during hybrid, before week one, it says duty time half-day. Can you, what, what is that?
So, we're going to have to make, we talked to the union, and this is already in our calendars. We actually owe them a duty time because we added extra professional development at the beginning of the year, and so we would have a duty time where basically the students are off, even online. They wouldn't have instruction for that half-day so that the teachers can prepare and get ready for.
Okay. Okay, so what I'm hearing is 5% or below would trigger a learning lab that would take place the following Monday. And then, I guess at that point, we, how long would we have to, is that what we're discussing, is how do we want to maintain that current standard of two weeks of 5% or below to then allow grades K through 2, grades 6 and 9 to come in for hybrid? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. I'm sorry to my air, just so you know, if my audio is low, my AirPods died out, and I'm, so I'm improvising right now because for so long. I've been trying to keep them charged in between, so I'll try to speak up, but I'm using improvised audio right now.
All right, trustee Petlicoff, did you have a, a point?
It's kind of to take on then, because Irene started to touch upon it. Once, if, if we went with what the new parameters were, and once triggered the learning labs, and we maintained the 5% or below, does that automatically then trigger the next phase of our hybrid plan? So, we would continue to add on as long as we still maintain a grade D and a 5% or below, and the learning labs are the beginning, and we would continue to move through the other phases. Is that what you're saying? Even though, and how are we going to incorporate the condition, I'm confused as to how we incorporate the condition of vaccination levels for staff? Where does that come into play with the first trigger of opening up the classrooms?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear it all because of my audio, but I think I got the gist of it. I think we, I missed part of what you said. I apologize because I was switching over to another microphone.
I'll say it again.
Okay. But I think I got, so let me see. We would still continue with that trigger, but we're now saying that as vaccines come in, as staff get protected, I think, you know, when you're looking at closures or other things that are going on, that you would consider that long-term for our staff, it's not a metrics, it's just, let's just keep looking at the numbers that are getting vaccinated. And so, if, if numbers start going up or down in the community or whatnot, we now know that we have staff, for example, protected, and hopefully down the line, we'll have students. It's just something that I believe we just want to have a consideration. It's not necessarily a specific number, like the first two metrics are, but it's just the consideration, just like ICU that's going into our decision. And what, what do I say that is because if the ICU rates are very high, and the hospitalization rates are high, then you know what's probably going to happen. So then, if I needed to, I mean, we can always call an emergency meeting or another meeting to say, hey, even though it's at these numbers, we may have to modify. So, that's why I just want to be broader. When you're looking at data sets, sometimes locking into the quantitative limits you. And so, what I want us to at least say is we're understanding that there's some other data sets that we're looking at, and that is also what the federal government and the experts are saying to look at. Not to say that we're not going to hit those triggers, but just to consider it. I think it's the responsible thing to do in the community.
But, but this is what I'm trying to understand. We're setting, we're changing the trigger from 5% for two weeks to 5% to one. That's basically what we're doing.
Yeah. If you choose to do so, if you still want the two weeks, if you want the two weeks, then we stick with it.
Yeah, in this motion, though, that's what we're figuring. And then that triggers the cascade of reopening in-person with the beginning with the learning labs. I'm not, that's why I don't know where the other part fits in that particular motion, because you're saying then, what, if we go, if we go up to 6, 6%, but if we have enough people vaccinated, we're gonna, we can, you can go ahead and decide to continue on. I mean, that's, it's very vague to me as to how that fits into that particular motion.
Well, we don't have a motion on, we don't have anything in there about what I would do on closures, for example. So, I, I'm open to whatever the, the pleasure of the board and what you're comfortable with. So, if you prefer that that not be in there, if that's what the board decides, I.
I'm just not sure how it's going to be used.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
The Wayne County Health Department matrix gives us some instruction. If we see outbreaks in buildings, we should do. It doesn't take into account the whole positivity rate. And that positivity rate is going to mean different things as vaccinations start to happen. When we got this whole thing started, there weren't vaccines available back on October 26th. We didn't know when this was going to happen. So, people might feel different with a 5% positivity rate if they know that the school staff is already vaccinated. So, that's.
But that's not what that motion is dictating. It, it's, it's just there. It's, it's not being utilized for anything in that motion. What we're saying is going to be the triggers are the 5% and a D rating, and 5% for one week. And the 5% positivity rate is for the aggregate of Wayne County. So, the D rating is where it's reflected about Dearborn's personal positivity rate incorporated with a couple of other components. And I'm not even certain how long that's going to hold true, since we're already hearing, even though we're still getting the reports, that they don't even want us looking at the A, B, C, D, E rating as, as a marker. So, that could not be a potential use come, come a few weeks from now. So, I, I'm just.
It will be used if we want it to be.
If they still continue to provide it.
They will, because it's still under the state law, even though they're saying technically, you don't have to adhere to it. It's still under the fact that the county health department has to provide reports to the school districts under the August legislation, under the return to school. So, they still must do that. Some schools, you know, they, they just, they can use it or not now is what we're, and we have it as officially approved by the board right now.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just kind of uncomfortable with the way the whole wording. I'd have to really look at that motion to understand what the consequences could be of it. Having just looked at it just now, I'm not ready yet.
Trustee Barry, go ahead.
Thank you. Mary, and the rest of my colleagues, when we voted on this back in October, it was not, and I understand what you're trying to say, that Dearborn is bringing up the average. In October, the total cases, and I know a couple of my colleagues have been making fun of me this because of all the numbers I keep bringing up, but you know, for me, numbers don't lie. Okay, so in October, there was 757. When we met that night, there was 757 total cases in Wayne County minus Detroit. And that's what we were at, at a 4.6 positivity rate. Okay. From the same report, 115 of those 757 positives were from Dearborn. Okay, since then, okay, we went up, all the way up to almost 5,000 positive cases in Wayne County. And when we were up to 49, 42 in Dearborn, it was 661 positive cases that week. Okay, fast forward to today. Cases that week. Okay, fast forward to today, we're still at almost eighteen hundred positive cases. In Wayne County this last week, okay? And out of those, two hundred and forty-nine, double what it was in October, are cases in Dearborn. So when I say numbers don't lie, they don't lie, the positivity rate was four point six. And that week, last week was reported to us, it's eight point six double. So that's why I've been following the positivity tree, that's been the most important thing. Now, when that, uh, trigger came in, that Wayne County metrics, even though they're saying you don't have to use this, stuff like that, that was part of our plan, so we do have to use it. Uh, so when it went to D, Mary, it's gonna be very, very difficult if the positivity rate keeps trending the same way. You know, the term they're using right now is, you know, turning, turning the curve, bending the curves, right, terminology. As long as that curve is still continues to bend in the right direction, trending the right direction. So last week, you know, uh, it was that, you know, still double digits, now we're at eight point six. The numbers, I actually have the numbers right in front of me here for the last few days. And, uh, I know when a nurse, uh, nurse mentioned that it's gonna be, you know, around eight. Actually, if you ever drop the last four, it's gonna be in the high sevens. So we continue going in the same direction, as long as we keep trending that direction. That D is gonna stay there. That's not gonna go away, the saga, so no, you know, it's not gonna switch over to an E. So, uh, when we made the decision, there was a lot of things that we took into consideration. Flu season was coming, we don't have a vaccine yet, one, two, three, and a lot of parents were angry at us. Lot of parents were angry at us that you need to open up schools, you need to open up schools, we heard that, you know, uh. Uh, but guess what happened around Thanksgiving? We know how ugly it got, you know, from, from this, from this graph right here, you can't see it, but, uh. Uh, that's a positivity rate report, ten days, exactly ten days after Thanksgiving, that's when we hit the highest point. Of positivity rate, which was fifteen point six. I've heard from so many parents that called me back and said, you know, Mr. Barry, you weren't wrong, you know, thank you. Uh, and I've shared this information with a couple of my colleagues, including Dr. Maliko, that those parents that were screaming bloody murder, murder. Were coming back and saying, even though I took my kid out of Dearborn Public Schools, I wish I wouldn't have, because even my charter school is closed now. So we made a good decision. When I said earlier, this is a solid plan, I would love to see this, uh, that we follow up on this plan. We're almost there. Don't forget, we're almost there. Now we're talking about maybe one week or two weeks, and we've been at this for ten, eleven months now. We're almost there. I would love to see us follow up on our plan and see it through. I would be, Dr. Maliko and President Thorpe, I would be comfortable with if we strain out the words and say. That yes, once we actually get a positive. A five percent or less positive rating. And we know that's still trending in the downward, the direction, I would be comfortable for you to pull that trigger that Monday. I would be okay with that. What does that mean? Is that on a Tuesday, we're gonna get a four point nine five positivity rate. Well, Tuesday, we, we already have, uh, two or three days worth of information that we can look at. If for some odd reason of a sudden, you know, that Sunday and Monday, it started going back up to eight and nine. You know, I would, uh, there's no doubt in my mind, Dr. Malik would do the right thing and say, let's hold off. Or if it's, the, the rate comes in at four point nine five. And, you know, and that Friday and Saturday and Sundays at four point eight, you know, maybe a five, but also four point six in there. We know it's still trending downward, then if you have to pull the trigger and get the labs open Monday. Then a week later, you know, follow the plan, I would be okay with that. But just to say. You know, as long as it's close to five percent, we can do that, that's to me, that would be, you know, getting, getting away from our plan. And, and what are we trying to do here? Just like, just to save a week or maybe possibly two? I'd say my, my position would be let's stick to our plan with very minor twisting of the words or variation of the words are better for it.
So before, I forget, let me bring this one up, um, the timeline on when we get the numbers. I know you present them to us, Dr. Maliko, usually on a Tuesday, you share them with us. Did you say they're, did it come on Thursday? You're muted right now.
We get them on Tuesday, Jim, I'm sorry, Dr. Malik, we get them on Tuesday, they're public Thursday. But the, the, the data that we get on Tuesday is up to the, up to Saturday, a few days before. So the week, they've given us the average from Sunday to Saturday and they report on Tuesday.
When we get the information on Tuesday, if we see that it's gone under five percent. We can then begin to prepare for learning labs and start the following Monday.
As long as it's still trending downward, I, that mean, that's, that's just my opinion, I would be comfortable with that. If we're gonna tweak the plan a little bit, I would be comfortable with that, which is to say to get away from those two weeks. And close to five percent, to me, that would be pretty vague.
Okay, trustee wants.
I would say a few things, um, I would feel more comfortable, and I know that we get the report on a Tuesday. If we were able to see the following Tuesday's report to reflect that we are truly going down, because we have to be cognizant of the, the variant that is coming. From the UK, I mean, we already have cases in Washington County. And I think right now we don't know necessarily what's, it's, it's a race to vaccines versus the variant. And I think we may see us, you know, it, it's fifty to seventy percent more contagious. It's not more dangerous, it's more contagious. So for me, I, I would like to be able to say, you know, we have the one report, this is good news. And then if we receive a second report showing us that it's maintaining or reducing, I think that would be reassuring. To say, okay, let's go ahead and open learning labs. Now, part of that also is, at what point, say, you know, if the percentage rate were to increase, what? When would we shut down learning labs if we were unfortunately to go in the opposite direction? So what, what would trigger an opening and versus a shutdown? Those are some things that I would like to be able to have.
Right, and that's one thing that, again, you go back to the county matrix. The county matrix really just gets down to the building level. So if, for instance, we start to see cases rise in one area of the city or in one school. There's nothing that says that the whole district would have to shut down. So if we went back over the five percent, would we make the choice to shut down the whole district? Or would we possibly just look at certain schools having to close?
And also acknowledging that, you know, the, the percentage that we're relying on may not be reflective of us. As a city, because we're not receiving those numbers. So we may be higher, we may be lower. So just knowing that it's not an exact science for the positivity rate in Dearborn.
And the evidence has shown that, that the COVID cases have not been uniformly across the whole district, the whole, the whole city.
Right.
And, and the one thing about using school buildings, if we don't have students in the schools and staff in the schools. If we're just in the beginning of, uh, reopening, we're not gonna have, have that kind of same data. I mean, right now, there's, if you use buildings, uh, all we've got in there is a barebone staff. So all we have to rely upon our, our positivity rates are more from the community and community spread.
Yeah, we've only had one case since the start, um. That has been what we call a potential, uh, spread in school, and that goes back to September. We've had no other cases. Cause those reports have to go on the state website as well. Um, and, and we talked about this before, but they consider two cases an outbreak if you're not in the same household, so. And we, we can't confirm that it was in the school, but there's a possibility. Uh, everything else, because in the school we control, it's been safe.
But we've had no kids in the school.
Yeah, well, exact, yeah, ex- for sure.
I, I mean, that, that.
Well, that's, that's exactly the point of what's happening. So we just have to understand that if we bring kids back, we just gotta, you know, be understanding. You know, we're balancing safety with the need for in-person instruction. I will, you know, I'm talking to my colleagues across the state, and there are other places where they've done with what, you know, Jim has said, uh, President, uh, Thorpe has said. That school may have had to close, uh, because of staff issues and whatnot, um, a- and those possibilities are there. Um, they, they, we, I've heard of a district where, you know, there was eighty, uh, kid, you know, students and staff in quarantine. Those kind of things, um, are possible. I do agree with what trustee Barry said. It earlier too, and I agree with your concern too, trustee Peltchkov, I think it's consideration. Um, but as we, um, you know, as we're looking at it, um. With the staff and whatnot, that, uh, by limiting them in the buildings, we've helped reduce the community spread as it's higher. But the, the reality is, is that when we come back, um, and trustee Barry said, we know more now than we knew in March. So that's why we know about masks and other things, and we're gonna do those other things that are gonna maintain more safety. We had these presentations on cleaning and all these things that we know. Uh, and I'm just gonna say, maybe it doesn't need to be in the motion, you know, I, 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 you know, I can agree with that about the vaccine. But I do think there's a recognition of the fact that as people's immunity build up and the vaccine comes, we all know that once we get it. It's gonna help us get back to some sense of normalcy next year. I believe this year, regardless of what instruction we're in. It's gonna continue to be kind of a, a piecemeal year, uh, in-person versus. It's happening in every district, and Dr. Rice just said it to me the other day. Next year, we got a gear, and we also got a gear up for it, you've asked for it and other trustees, uh, for how we're gonna get extra summer programs. And extra, uh, date next year, and that'll be the next issue that we get into, um, as well. But the reality is, we just gotta expect that there could be potential issues. That's why we hope that, uh, the trend keeps going down, so we're less likely of a spread in the community or coming in. And we would be safer with all the mitigation factors, and then the vaccine to me is, is the other factor that, uh, is important. And I hope that we get it soon for our employees.